I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, June 26, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, One Metcalf Square, Winthrop, Massachusetts. We are being televised live by WCAT. Will you call the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard, Mr. Lutieri, Mr. Matucci, Ms. Petrie?
Here.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell? Here. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in front of our eyes, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no delegates and visitors tonight, and we have no public comment, so I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th.
Motion second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay, we have a number of warrants to go through tonight. Given the size of the numbers, I will call them individually. May I have a motion for warrant, SVW 23-25, in the amount of $969,019.06?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant, SPW 23-25, also in the amount of $969,019.06?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant, SPW 23-26A, in the amount of $624,980.92?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant, SPW 23-26B, in the amount of $626,307.79?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Motion for payroll warrant, SPW 23-26C, in the amount of $626,784.64?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. A motion for payroll warrant, SPW 23-26D, in the amount of $626,784.64?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Motion for payroll warrant, SPW 23-26E, in the amount of $626,784.63?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Payroll warrant, SPW 23-26, in the amount of $370,829.85?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And then I need a budget transfer motion for the amount of $2,519.
Motion second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objection? Ayes have it. Do we have any buildings and grounds requests?
We skipped the regular warrant, the first warrant.
The very first warrant, SPW 23-25, in the amount of $969,019.06?
No, those are all the payrolls. There was a warrant before that, the regular warrant.
SVW? That's all I have, is warrant, SVW 23-25.
There was a regular warrant in the packet. Oh, yeah, that's 502-10141. Yep, I'm sorry, I must've just missed that on your sheet, but it is in the packet.
Okay.
So that's what that is.
And I have a motion to approve warrant, SVW 23-22, in the amount of $502,101.40?
Motion second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Got all?
Yes.
Very good.
Sorry about that.
Excellent, we've gotten through them. I don't see that we have any buildings and grounds or subcommittee. Do we have a superintendent's report?
We do. So as you can see, the end of the year, the payroll warrants mount up for the end of the year payroll for the summer paychecks for staff, so that's why you're seeing such a large amount. And just staying on finance in my committee report, we are working diligently to close out the school year. Typically, the school year, there's lots of work that happens in the month of June and trails off into July, so open purchase orders, we get all of those closed, making sure that there's nothing outstanding. If there's anything that needs to be carried over, we have to create carryover purchase orders for those. Our secretaries and principals and administration has been excellent in keeping track of that. If you remember, we froze the budget in April, and then we lightened up a little bit, so there was sort of a pause in the amount of purchases that were being made, and now you'll start to see some more as those close out. If there are still outstanding things that were needed for the school year, we certainly will purchase those, but we'll explain those as those come forward. I believe that we will close on time for sure, without any deficit at this point. I'll give you another update in the upcoming next school committee meeting, but I do not anticipate us having anything that we need to return to the town for this current school year's budget. Continuing to do a ton of work on next school year's budget, and that will come up in this meeting. Lots of staffing changes for us, so that impact next year's budget in a good way, so I'll get to that when we talk about the budget. But the hiring process has been very busy, as you've seen over the last several meetings. We've had resignations, retirements. We have continued the process of doing exit surveys, and they've been extremely helpful. We ask people to be very candid with us in terms of why they're choosing to leave the district, and once we compile all of those, I'll have a summary of that so folks are able to hear. Lots of people moving on to new careers, which is, you know, exciting for them. We've also had quite a bit of internal moving, which I think is a great thing, so people moving up to administrative positions, people moving from current classroom positions to different positions, and I'll explain some of those. So positions that we've filled, we've been very busy this week signing letters of hire. I do meet with every new employee in the district. It's somewhat of a torture process for them, but it does help me get to know people and start to build relationships with the new staff that is coming in. They spend some time listening to me about our strategic plan, about our mission and our vision, and about what the expectations are, and then they get a little bit of coaching from me, especially with our new staff, with an understanding that I'm going to do some more coaching with them once the school year opens and they get to meet with me again to go through my top 10, list of top 10 things that I wish somebody told me when I first started teaching. And that, that changes every couple of years, but it's little bits of information, and again, it's about relationship building and getting to know our new staff. So at the middle school, we've hired a special ed teacher, Brendan Loomis, to fill an open position. These are all open positions that we fill. Our language-based, new language-based special ed program, Kayla Camrata, at the high school. We also had another open special ed position. Lauren Weber is taking that. A new ESP filling an open spot, Natalie Fitzpatrick, in moving on to the Gorman Fort Banks. Grade one, we had two grade one openings, we're filling that with those positions with Madeline Durkin and Caitlin Poria. Grade two positions, Whitney DeSantis is a current employee who is moving from one position and taking on the second grade. Taylor Murphy is taking the other second grade opening. Taylor was with us a year ago this past school year. She was pursuing something different and has decided to return, so that's always good news. Very strong teacher, we're excited to have her back. The special education chairperson position was opened this year because Julie Fodietis, who was our special ed chairperson for many years, has decided to teach reading, and so it's exciting that she'll take the open reading position. And Suzie Diottis, who is a Winthrop resident, has children in our system, she is coming to us from Newton. She is currently a special ed chairperson in Newton, and would like to come back here to Winthrop and work here, so we're excited to have her. We filled the ELL position at the fort with Sarah O'Brien. Had a great meeting with a new music teacher, Grace Wardrick. She was really eager and excited to come on board with us. Like I said, Julie Fodietis assumed the open reading position. And then in grade four, Allison LeBlanc, who was with us this year as an intern, a fellow from Salem State, so we rebirthed our fellowship program with Salem State, in which they send us a fellow for the year, and they're committed to getting their master's degree and educational licensure. It gives us an opportunity to get to know someone for a whole year, so when a position opens, we actually have some really good knowledge of how strong that person will be. So we're excited to have Allison assume that open fourth grade position. The fifth grade position, which is a one-year leave of absence position, we've hired Kayla Harrington for that. Another internal move, we have, as you know, a new classroom at the Cummings School for our students with autism that are moving up from the Fort Bank. Toni Tidmore has received her license, and she'll be moving from an ESP to that position. Winthrop Middle School, we've hired a new art teacher, Angela Salazar, in STEM position at the middle school, opened by retirement. We've hired Abigail Lindstone. And in grade seven today, I met with Michael Barad. He's going to be teaching grade seven science, and he was very positive, super energetic and excited to work with middle school students. Some of the positions that we still have open, multiple ESP positions, we're actively pursuing those through looking at reaching out to colleges, utilizing the school spring and other platforms for recruiting for those positions. A pre-K special ed position is open at the Gorman Fort Banks, because that teacher there last year has taken one of the open positions at the fort. The computers position, another one opened by an internal transfer, is still open. Still seeking a grade three to five special education teacher at the Cummings, a physical education teacher at Winthrop High School. And one position which we have spent a few years in a row now, really struggling to find qualified candidates, even, even through the multiple platforms that we're using, reaching out to colleges, phoning friends, that's the Spanish position at the middle school. We are still really struggling to recruit people for that position. If we don't and are unable to fill that position, I think we're going to be forced to go back to what we had to do last year, which is fill in with a phys ed and health teacher. Not what we would like to do, but we will continue to recruit. Ryan Kelly has been pretty aggressive in reaching out to various colleges and, you know, different platforms just to try to recruit someone for that position. In terms of professional development, so our Leadership Academy, which we hold every summer, and that's where the administrators, the principals, the athletic director, the pupil personnel director, and various additional administration meets with me throughout the summer on, usually it's three days this year, I think we're looking more at two full days and then three or four half-days because of the amount of work we have to do. So we meet together and have a pretty thick calendar of topics that we discuss as a group. We leave the nuts and bolts out, so, because we want to value our time, so nuts and bolts are things that we can discuss as a group through email, updating of plans, fire drills, things like that, things that you could easily communicate via email. That maximizes our time when we're together in the summer. So some of the topics for our summer academy and the principals and other admin is still filtering topics into me, is reviewing our strategic plan is something we do every year, looking at our accomplishments, looking at how we can tweak that strategic plan, what do we need to add to it. We'll be doing a large amount of work on administrative goal setting. We are, we are looking to have some district-wide goals for administration around curriculum reviews and walkthroughs, rebirthing the walkthroughs that we did in the past, where we walk into classrooms with an agenda of what are we looking for, and we have a list of look-fours. They are not evaluative by any means, it's more, are we sticking to the strategic plan and are we seeing the things in classrooms that we want to see? Then there's debriefing of those meetings with the administrator in that building as to what the team of people saw when they were walking through classrooms, and that enables the administrator who's evaluating the teachers to be able to go back and give some feedback about what he's looking for or she's looking for in those classrooms. And if they're not present, how do we get those items, you know, back up and present, whether it's student engagement, whether it's circling and going back in the curriculum, looking just for behavior management in the classroom. Couple of the other things we'll be looking at during our leadership meeting is getting a better, a better sense of our continuity with homework, what we're expecting of students for homework. We did a lot of work on that prior to COVID, and then obviously homework was not a real thing anymore, but we need to get back to the business of having consistency in our, sort of, look-fours in our students, especially with homework, and giving parents better understanding of what to expect at each grade level in terms of homework. So we have lots of work, a lot of work to do on that. We'll update our professional development calendar. We've just reviewed our residency procedures, and as you know, they're very strict. We have had some feedback from parents, and a little bit of feedback from the Department of Education as well, on the, how stringent they are, and so we've updated them, adding language that talks about documentation that we're seeking not being exhaustive. That doesn't mean we're changing what we expect, but we now need to look at things a little bit differently. If somebody doesn't have access to a landlord, because the landlord lives out of the country and won't give them a verified document, you know, how are we going to address that? So we're about three-quarters of the way done with it. We have posted our most recent updated procedures online. Those may change a little bit at the end of the summer for the better, but we do need to stay in line with equity and what the Department of Education expects us to be able to, to look at for documentation. We can set our own procedures, which we have, but giving people an understanding that we will speak to people if there is a specific struggle in getting documentation. We haven't taken anything off of our documentation list that we expect, but we have added that the list is not exhaustive, meaning at the end of the day, if somebody needs to come in and sit down with us and explain the situation, that our doors will be open to do that. Safety and security is always a major topic of the summer. That's inclusive of the evaluations of the police and fire department. They'll come out in late July, early August, and look at every school building. That's required, I believe, by, by state requirements every three years. Here at the Public Schools, we do it every year. And then what happens is a report is generated from the Fire and Police Department with sort of a to-do list for us, whether it's updating locks, updating cameras, fixing doors, fixing entryways, removing flammable rugs in classrooms that sometimes get brought in, and then we report an update to them pretty quickly after, usually before school opens, with all the things that we've accomplished, and then the plan for those things that we, the idea or the sort of breakdown of how we'll address any of the bigger ticket items. Certain things are required, certainly fire law, updated elevator, you know, reviews, we typically have those, we come out pretty clean on those, but there's always suggestions for improvement. We meet as a team to decide what we can do and prioritize those lists. Typically, we get them all done. If there is a bigger ticket item, I'd bring that back to the committee and talk about how we may have to attack that. The elevator systems are all updated, however, there's elevator code that changes on a dime, which it did last year, and sometimes we have to appropriate funds to come up to code with those. I think we're all on par in all of our schools right now with the elevators, but they are, they are an expensive thing to have within a school system. We'll look at, early on in our leadership meetings, the school improvement plans, the student handbooks, and the planners for principals, which we have not done for a few years, to come in and explain any changes in the student handbook, so you'll be given the student handbook, but the principal will be able to come in and highlight those things that have been changed. We're also going to be developing a calendar for school committee monthly presentations. I think it's important for us now to begin to utilize that visitors' aspect of our, of our agenda every week, to bring in folks to give you updates at a minimum on a monthly basis. And that can be anything from the facilities manager, to the athletic director, to people from CASA, and just promoting what it is that they're doing. We found that so much gets done, and we just don't have the time to talk about it. So we want to get that on the calendar monthly for each school committee meeting. You will get one more updated version of the school's calendar. We had to, I believe, I don't know if it's in your packet this week, but if not, we will get an email to you.
I don't think I put it in this week.
I don't think so. We will, every time we go through that calendar, we find something else that we want to either make a little bit prettier or make a little bit more clearer to parents, including the half-day schedule, so we want to update that one more time, and that will be posted to our website ASAP if it hasn't already been done so. Let me see. Grants, just for grants, an update on grants, we're waiting from the Department of Education. It's usually when I'm at the superintendent's conference, which I will be at from July 11th through the 13th. That's usually when we get the numbers from the Department of Education on the grant allocations, those things that are typical, and entitlement grants, like the Special Education 240 grant, all the title grants, Title I, Title II, Title II-A, Title III, Title IV. And I will bring those grants to the committee, so you can approve the money coming in, and we'll give you an overview of how those grants are being utilized. I can give you a quick overview that most of the money is allocated to staffing, because it is what balances, 1.8 million, I can tell you in one second. 1.8 millions, 1,878,746 dollars out of grants is used to supplement the staffing of the Winthrop Public Schools. That is on top of the current budget as of, as of this past April, 21,240,595 dollars. So as you can see, we supplement that budget with close to $2 million worth of salaries. It's not the ideal way to use grant money. We'd like to use it more to expand our programs, to offer more for our students. Unfortunately, our, our hands are tied, and we need to use the majority of those grant funds to supplement the salaries of our school. And once they're posted, I'll bring all those numbers back to the school committee to accept those. Another big sort of ticket item, and the last thing I'll talk about, is the conversion from I-PASS to Power School over the next year. So I-PASS is the student information system that the school department has used for maybe 10 years now. They have dwindled in their company from having multiple employees down to three. And their three employees do wonders for us and they help us, but what we have found is that student information system speaks to the Department of Education. So they draw a lot of the information about our schools, including our numbers, our EL numbers, our special ed numbers, our transportation numbers. That all gets brought back to the Department of Education, and the end result of that data converts to money for the school district. We have worked tirelessly to have that system be accurate. The amount of work, ground-level work on the school side is now, we're being outpaced. And the second you let your eyes off of that system, you start to lose money. The other part of it is, they do, I-PASS no longer has the capability to handle the platforms that we have in our schools, that all the curriculum platforms, the evaluation platforms, that are all web-based, that need to be integrated into the student information system. Renaissance, Clever, all of those items. So what happens is, we end up doing a lot of on-the-ground handwork and data entry into computers, which is wasting a lot of time with teachers and instruction. So converting to a new system, we've looked at I-PASS, we've looked at, what? School Brain? School Brain?
Aspen slash Bullet.
Yeah. To see which system could best handle us with the end result of having the accuracy that we need. The other piece of the accuracy that we need is tracking our attendance district-wide, inclusive of teachers, and maintaining that so that when somebody's up to retire, how many days do they have? Is that accurate? If somebody goes on FMLA, Lee, how many sick days do we remove? How many personal days? Right now, we're doing a lot of that by hand. And again, when you do things by hand, paper, human error happens, and then paper gets lost. So converting to I-PASS, converting to Power School, I believe is in the best interest of the school. We got in on a window, a timeframe in April, where we received a $48,000 quarter, $48,000 discount. It's a system that costs $53,000 a year to run, which is less than what we're paying for I-PASS and an I-PASS consultant right now. So we're actually going to make out better in the long run. The difficulty is the conversion piece. It typically takes a full year to convert a full student information system because of all the data that they have to extrapolate and then put into a new system, and then all the training involved in how to use it, because all the rating is on it, attendance is on it, platform utilization is on it, and then how to use it to the point that you're getting a bang for your buck, because there are so many aspects to it that we can use and should be using that we've never used before. Either I-PASS didn't have it, or it was too complicated, and there wasn't enough time to do the training. So taking a full school year to implement the system, to do the conversion and implement the system and get people trained prior to opening up next year, I think will, will move us to do it that way, so that people weren't surprised, and that we have people on the ground that are well-schooled in Power School, so that we can run reports on a dime. We can make sure everything is accurate in all of our reporting to the Department of Ed, which is another whole host of body activity, where people have to convert all of that information. That will be much more efficient and easily done. So we're excited for that. We've had about six meetings with Power School prior to deciding that this is going to be the best direction. We've spoken to multiple schools that use Power School to see what their feeling is, and anytime there's change, there's problems, we know that. So changing over the summer would not be good for anyone without converting all of that information and training our staff. So we are excited to be able to know that in the future, this is going to help us across the board, and I will bring you more information on that as we get a little bit deeper into it. And the very last thing, at one of our prior meetings, I think somebody asked, had a statement about teacher evaluation, and the timelines for that, I can share out with the committee via email. We put together the teacher evaluation timeline this year that is clearly marked for teachers, but more importantly, clearly marked for administrators, to make sure that we are hitting every date that correlates to the, to the contract with our teachers. I thought Julie fell off. Julie, did not fall off?
I'm here.
Okay, good. So I'll share that with you. It's being shared with the teachers as well. It was already shared with the union, and everybody is on board that these are the correct dates, and now it'll be clearly airmarked in every building, on everybody's desk, when things are due. And the last, very last thing I'll tell you is, we have had a change in union membership. So Kristin Reynolds has resigned as the union president effective June 30th, and Ray Leonardo will be taking over. I have had multiple meetings with Ray, because he's been the vice president. I feel very confident that the trusting relationships that have been built with the union and myself and the administrators as well, I believe it will be a good transition. We've had two transition meetings that have gone very well, and he will officially take over on the 1st of July, and I will continue my bi-monthly meetings with him. And I will continue my bi-monthly meetings, um, with him in which we sit down and just kind of talk about a number of things before they become a bigger thing. Uh, so I'm excited to work with Ray. And that would be my superintendent report.
Fantastic. Any questions? Yes.
Yeah, can we go back to, I'm concerned about Spanish. I mean, we, I, I looked at the curriculum, you know, in other schools, and, and the average number of languages taught in the, in Boston are two. And we only have
One.
Uh, one, and that, and not even a whole one, that, I mean, not as many years as we'd like to have in Spanish, so.
Yes.
I, there are so many great online programs for teaching languages. I can't imagine we couldn't find a Spanish coach and put Spanish, at least the curriculum, you know, online curriculum, and have kids come into the classroom with somebody helping to teach them. Why is it that we can't do that?
I don't know. I don't know that we can do that. Uh, certainly we'll, we'll look into it. It's sort of, um, it would be strange to have the curriculum be just online and just have someone coaching them, because then they don't actually have a certified teacher teaching the course. But it's certainly something that, you know, we can look into and, and see whether or not there are courses that are often with live instruction perhaps. So it's sort of like subcontracting out the job, but you still have to have a human in the room.
Right.
So that there is, you know, safety, classroom management, um, accountability, and things like that. I will bring that up to, um, Brian Crowley, see if he has looked into that at, at all.
I brought this up last year, and I still think it's possible. I mean, I, I know that we, in another place I was at, I was at college, but we taught all of, um, Microsoft Office suites on Saturday morning. We taught Excel, et cetera, et cetera, and we taught it with a coach. Essentially, we had an online program. Kids loved it, and they came to it. I, I.
Tell me what's looking into.
It, it really is, because a lot of colleges require that you graduate with at least one language.
Right.
Not graduate.
And that's a requi, that's, that's a requirement at the high school, that all students have to participate in languages because of the college.
But it's only, we only have enough teachers for what? One year, two years?
We have to take two, two years of Spanish, and they can take a third, so we also have, um, I believe you can go to, I believe you can go to Spanish four, but let me check with, with Matt on that. And Spanish four would not be one teacher teaching six, five periods of Spanish four. I believe it would be one teacher for the students that can achieve up to Spanish four. It might be a classroom of twenty-five or thirty kids. I can check with Mr. Primby on that.
Please, I mean, let's, I mean, I, I think it's really critical, and we have so many kids that know Spanish within the school system, so it might be really, I mean, there might be an opportunity there for kids that already know Spanish to also help teach.
Sure.
I mean, it, to teach each other, so.
I'll bring that up. Thank you.
Or maybe even, um, if we can't secure a teacher, thinking about like after-school programming, where you have like a foreign language club where the kids can then opt to do one of those guided programs, so then you don't need it to be taught by a certified teacher in that language, but the kids can still have access to it.
I, I brought this up too with kids for us after school, and they were teaching Spanish, because I thought it was a good idea.
So right now, in Twenty-First Century, we, we have something similar. So we have students from the high school that are working with a population of kids who speak Spanish, Portuguese, and I believe Arabic. Um, and they are actually working in Twenty-First to kind of bridge the language. A lot of these kids don't speak any English at all.
We started that, well, maybe it was Twenty-First Cent, Twenty-First Century was over here in the Cummings. Okay, that's where we, that's where we started.
It's an official program now, and our high school students get paid.
Okay, great. Well, that's what, we started that.
We also have a parent English class where we invite our parents in who don't speak English to learn English, and that's taught through a grant, uh, I believe it's one or two nights a week, um, here at the Cummings School. We, we have a lot of parent participation.
I remember that was mentioned before. I can't remember. That came up in a, in another meeting here, and I think that's a great idea. But I, I, I don't think we, we can't drop this. The second, um, thing is that we, I brought this up before, but I, I just want to make sure that in September at least, we do follow through on Lori going to a, a couple of other places and reporting on bullying and what they've been doing, and is there anything else that she's learned from other schools that we're not doing? I know we're doing a lot, but if there's anything that we can learn from, from other districts that might be helpful, um, because everybody faces that problem, so maybe in your superintendent's meeting, that's something that you.
So that's on our agenda, because you have to, every two years, update your bullying plan, and it's our time to do that. May, you may tweak it. You may not do anything to it at all.
Right. I understand.
But that's, that is a, a, a full group discussion. Jen O'Connell's been to, she's our PPS director. She's been to at least three recent, in the past two years, trainings on bullying and prevention. Um, so she'll be bringing back some information, and I'll, I'll talk to Lori's superintendent conference down the Cape. Um, I'm sure that that is going to be a topic that both, both of us will be involved in.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, so.
Um, I, I wanted to tell you all, I s, I looked up AI's definition of bullying policies, and I said, I said, we said the bullying policy I found on AI.
Which is the exact replica of the Department of Education's bullying policy. So.
Interesting.
That's where they're pulling it from.
I work with an organization called Boston Versus Bullies in BPS, and they do, all the programming that they do is for, is free. I can ask them if they have any resources or capacity to expand
Great.
in other districts.
Yeah, that would be great.
And one more thing. Um, tell me who use, what other schools use Power School?
Marblehead uses.
Marblehead, Ipswich, Stone, I think Stoneham. I'd have to look at my, I have nothing on my.
Are those, have they used it for a while?
It, Power School's been out for quite a few years.
Winchester uses it, uh, oh my goodness.
And how do we, how do we get the data that we, the current data that we have? Who's going to convert that data over?
Power School. Power School does the full conversion.
Okay, great.
So, and they will work with I-Pass, and I-Pass is, you know, I-Pass is dwindling, so they're, they're aware. Um, and they're forthcoming and more than willing, you know, to be a part of that. They actually don't have a choice, because they're still employed by us for the rest of next school year.
And one more question. I know that we were going through this whole handbook policy review, and you were working on that overall. Is that going to be finished soon?
Yeah, so just a quick update on the policy handbook. We've had five meetings with Dorothy Presser. So Dorothy Presser is, is the go-to person for the Mass Association for School Committees. She's done, um, I think she told us twenty-two schools in the past three years of looking at their policies, and it's very eye-opening. And I, I was expecting sort of, wow, you know, you have a lot of stuff in here that you, you don't need, but you're missing a lot. That has not been the case, which has been really nice. We've gone, we're through students, which is three-quarters of the way through the policy book. Um, we've done A, B, C, D, right up through L. Um, so what they do is they go through and they say, this is the M-A-S-S policy. It exists. This is what you have. We suggest you add this legal reference to it, or remove these words, or change.
Right.
This, so they've done that with every single policy. We will now start to have policy subcommittee meetings, where I, we'll bring them in batch. So we'll bring all of section A, all of section B. Some sections are very small, others are very big. We'll bring that to policy subcommittee, explain what the recommendation is from M-A-S-S, and then policy subcommittee can vote to move, to accept all the changes, bring it to the school committee, provide the school committee all of the changes so that you can review them. And then you could, you do not have to do a reading of them all. You can do, you can, and that, yeah. You can actually do them in groups, which will save a lot of time. If you go on M-A-S-S website and look up policy, you'll see the schools that have gone through the process who, who now have all their policies online, like we intend to do.
Right.
And what happens is as they get updated through M-A-S-S, M-A-S-S will ping you to say, here's a policy in November of twenty-twenty-four that has been updated from M-A-S-S, and they'll actually ask you to bring it to your committee, and then they'll swap them, and everything stays online.
Yeah.
Which is pretty amazing.
I remembered that we were going to do that. I just didn't know when it was going to be finished.
They, yeah, they, they told us it would take a year. We're, we're a little bit ahead of the timeline, which is great.
So you think it'll be done by September?
No, I think it'll be done by, by the time they all come back to, through policy subcommittee into the school committee. Um, all our policies are still in existence. These would just be all the changes. Um, to have a full new policy book, I would say, hopefully by January.
Okay. That's it. Thanks.
Very good. Any homeschool applications?
Not yet, but expect them at the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, appointments, resignations, retirements, and postings beyond what you are discussed.
Yep, I already, I discussed those in my, um, school committee report, and you see the listings, um, down here that I've spoken of.
Any leave of ab, leaves of absence?
As of right now, no.
Okay. And we are going to be voting on the final budget tonight, which we have before us. Um, I have a motion to approve the budget as presented by the superintendent and approved by the town council.
Reluctantly, I, well, me, motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fol, second by Ms. Payne, and we will now have discussion if you would like to just.
I'll just give you a brief, I think it's important to have an overview, and for the community to have an overview. So, um, the town, we did, I did a presentation for both a needs-based budget, which is the budget, um, that I believe is the true needs of the school district, and I will stand by that forever. And then I also presented the community, the town council, and the school committee with a level service budget, um, which is everything we have now this past school year with mandated, um, increases or mandated programs that needed to be put in and what that cost would be. And as of April of last year, of this past school year, um, I presented you with a total school budget of salaries and expenses, not counting the salaries that are in grants, of twenty-six million, four hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. So that is salaries of teachers and all of our employees plus expenses. It does not, that number would not include the town's new fund sources that they have transferred over to the school. That was an additional nine million, two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. So the town's appropriation, approved appropriation for the school department in, in the end, for all of our salaries, expenses, and the new town budget items, such as insurance, liability, and all of the things that are listed on page, I think fifty-four of your budget, that nine million dollar, um, sort of a healthcare accounting shift, came to the grand total of thirty-five million, six hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That number that was approved by the town council for the school's appropriation was four hundred and eighty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars short of what we would need for a level service budget. So the job of myself and the, the business manager and administration, knowing that that is the money that is going to be provided to us by the town, have to come back to the school committee and say, we're still sitting with a level service budget, but we're receiving funding that is below the level service budget. And because of that, we have to now take our level service budget and make it equivalent to what the town has appropriated for funds. So we have to go into that level service budget and remove four hundred and eighty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars from that budget to make it flush. So how, how can you, how do you do that? You do it reluctantly, um, and, and it's not something that can be done just on a Tuesday, because if you understand school budgets, they're constantly moving. Um, staffing and, and staffing changes from one year to, to the next. Um, grants change from one year to a next, so if you needed to come up with four hundred and eighty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars in cuts, you have to have a plan about where you're going to go to, to get that money. If you're going to a grant to get that money, as you've heard probably seven hundred times from me, our grants are primarily staffing. So if we're going to try to, to keep a position that we couldn't otherwise keep because we're not getting enough money, I'd have to look at a grant and say, is there any movement in that grant? Can I put another body in that grant? Another thing that, when we developed the budget in April, that we don't have, um, information on yet, is how much money will we be able to prepay at the end of a school year for out-of-district tuitions? Because if the line item for out-of-district tuitions is two million dollars, if there's any money left at the end of the school year, you are legally allowed to prepay your tuitions. So whatever money is left, and hence the reason we freeze budgets, not a good practice, but necessary. Um, you, you would take that amount of money left at the end of the school year and allocate that towards prepaying tuition so that you could come up with a level budget. Not level service, but level to the amount of money you're receiving from the town. So a couple of things that have happened since April. We've had turnover in staff. So if you want to do the math with me, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars, um, how do I, how do I cut that amount of money? So we've determined as of this week that we can prepay with funds that we believe will not be expended by the end of this school year, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars worth of tuition. So two-nine-two-five-five-nine, taken from the four-eighty-seven-oh-two-five, leaves us now with a deficit of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, four-sixty-six. We've had in turnover, meaning staff that have left and new staff that we've hired, as of right now, we've recovered eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. How does that happen? A master's degree, a, 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 a CAGS-level teacher on step eight needs. You have to bring somebody in at a master's degree, step six. So the savings is the CAGS teacher was making ninety-three, the master's step-six teacher is making seventy-eight, and that's how you begin to fill that, that pothole. So as of this week, we, we have, in turnover, have eighty-eight thousand, four fifty-one, which brings our deficit down to a hundred and six thousand and fifteen dollars. And I now need to go more deeply and figure out where that is going to come from. So we looked at our circuit breaker funds. So circuit breaker, we use circuit breaker. All the circuit breaker money that came in during this school year, we allocate automatically to tuitions for next year, which is a legal practice. And if any of those tuitions have changed, or if there's any monies left in circuit breaker, we're able to carry it over for sixteen months. We believe that we can utilize forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars worth of circuit breaker funds to lower that deficit and still be able to cover our needs moving forward. Um, and then with, uh, fifty-six thou, that leaves us with a deficit of fifty-six thousand and seventy-nine dollars. And what we have looked at is prepaying a portion of the Renaissance curriculum platform and taking any funds that the remaining fifty-six thousand and seventy-nine dollars of funds left over at the end of this school year to flatten this school year out and prepay, which is appropriate, to prepay a portion of Renaissance, which will get us down to zero. Again, not a fun practice, not an ideal practice, um, but when people say, well, you still made it and there are no cuts. There are cuts. There are two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars worth of a cut from this school year because we put a freeze on the budget, so that money would have otherwise been spent this year to prepay for next year. Turnover, there is a cut in turnover. Yes, the bodies are coming in, but we're limited. We're limited in what we can pay people. And when you put limitations on who you can hire, you put limitations on instruction. And, and, you know, hiring a seasoned teacher, I love hiring new teachers. I don't love being in the practice of having more new teachers than I have seasoned teachers, because then we're not balancing our playing field of people being able to mentor other people with experience to grow new teachers. Um, and then the circuit breaker funding, I could talk for six hours on circuit breaker. It happens to be something that I am somewhat obsessed with, and I will say very, I have a very strong knowledge about the use of circuit breaker and what's appropriate according to the Department of Revenue and the Department of Education. We have just, two years ago, reversed circuit breaker to be the way it is supposed to be, which is a, which is a reimbursement program to help offset your needs for the next school year. We're digging into that for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, not a huge amount of money when it comes to circuit breaker, um, but forty-nine thousand is, you know, an instructional aid and some materials and supplies. And then prepaying Renaissance, fifty-six thousand and seventy-nine dollars that we couldn't spend this year because we needed to put a freeze on the budget to make sure we close and anticipating not receiving a level service or what we asked for, which is a needs-based budget for next year. And so that, that practice of sort of not doing something this year so that you can do it next year, because you know you're not going to have enough money to run the school district, um, is a painful process, um, that I don't know that we will sustain it through the years ahead of us. I think we are at the point, when you talk about your full school budget, not including the new town expenses that have been accounting-purposed moved over, twenty-one million, two hundred twenty-one million, two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars in salaries compared to five million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and one dollars in expense. And that's a dramatic difference. And if you add the salaries that are in the grants, which is close to another two million, twenty-three million in salaries to five million in expenses. We're at a point where there's nothing left to cut. Their expenses include mandatory services, contracts that you have for student information systems, Xerox, materials and supplies, curriculum platforms. And the salaries we have, sounds like a lot of salary. We have nineteen hundred and eighty-eight children enrolled in the winter public schools. One hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty-seven teachers, seventy-one ESPs. We are not administratively fat. We are not teacher fat. We have good class size. The impact of having to cut teachers moving forward means class size is going up. Now, this is not for next school year. We're talking about the following school year. So not to be Debbie Downer on all of this, but I do think it's important for people to understand that, no, we didn't just buy money. We have to meet, we cannot spend more than the town has appropriated for us. We're not receiving enough in an appropriation, and I understand the position of the town. They don't have enough to run the town either. But it's food for thought. Let's, I'll get off my box and let you vote on that.
Thank you for all your work on this and all of the due diligence. I know that you have been steeped in this since we began budget process, and you're already steeped in the next budget process. And I think it's important to note that it's not, when you say you were able to take money from the end of this year to put into the, the end of last, the end of the last school year to this, it's not like there was extra money in that budget.
We froze, we froze the budget and stopped doing
So there were things
Certain things, things that we could have done that we couldn't do, knowing that we'd be that much further behind the eight ball when we try to open the doors in September.
I made one comment, Jen. This, I don't know. Maybe it's just education, but I don't think so. It's very difficult to sit here and know that you're gonna be in trouble in the following year and not do something to prevent it. And it's very hard in education to prevent anything. Sometimes people just have to fall flat on their face. It has to be tragedy, awful. Everybody has to be up in arms about the size of this, you know, classrooms, the condition of the buildings, whatever, to move. And I am really hoping that this town collectively can see that we could, we're better than that. And I just, I mean, I'm gonna work on it. I'm sure everybody around the table is gonna work on it, but
The urgency is there. The urgency is, it's here.
I know, but we, we're, I'm not sure it's clear to everyone how urgent it is because, quote, "It seems okay. We made it through another year."
I get the phone calls. I'm the one that sits, you know, at town hall or in school buildings and sees the impact of not having enough electives, not having band, not having extra, you know, languages for kids, not having after-school programs, not being able to have other programs that are of interest to kids who don't have an interest in what we currently have. You know, all of those things, user fees. You know, we have parents that can't afford user fees. And you have to pay a user fee for everything you do because it has to supplement our budget. So there's a running list of all of the things that we shouldn't be having to scrape and beg for. You know, there's only so many bodies here writing grants, you know? So I do agree that movement needs to be had for the school to survive in the future.
Without further comment, I would like to call for a roll. Oh, yes. Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Woke?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
You still there, Ms. Barry?
Julie?
I'm here. Sorry, I was on you.
Okay.
You got, you were doing the roll call for the budget.
Yes, I approve it.
Thank you.
And Ms. Powell?
Yes.
With that, we have no unfinished business. Public relations?
I don't think we had public relations this week.
Enjoy your summer.
Yeah, congratulations to the staff on finishing a school year. And good luck with your summer program.
Oh, good luck with your summer program.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Right back at you. Right back at you.
Fantastic. Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Woke, second by Ms. Petrie. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.